Okay. I guess we can begin, possibly? Well, we lost. We lost Bernice. We lost Bernice. Well, wait a second, see if she reappears.
Was Jim Davidge gonna join us?
I thought he was.
No, he's away.
He's away. They had, he was gonna try to come in, but he had, like, reservations, he's out of town and so.
Well, let's wait another couple of minutes for Bernice. And then if not, we'll start, we have five members.
Buddy, you might call Bernice, she must be having problems.
Well, we only have four right now.
Well, we have a quorum. So I mean, we could, we could begin, but we've only got one resolution and then we will be beginning hearing an application, so.
Is four a quorum?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Claudia, are you trying to reach out to Bernice?
I hear on the phone, so.
Oh, good, okay.
Trying to get Bernice linked up with Zoom. Could be a minute or so.
Okay.
If you want to do the resolution.
Yeah, we can, we can start. All right, I'm gonna, we're recording, I assume, I heard that.
Yes, sir.
Done. Okay, I'll start with the, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on August 23rd, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on August 18th, 2023, and has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order Number 292, the, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public, public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public. Notice that during this state, during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board of the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, can you call the role, please?
Ms. Chen.
I see her name on the screen, but I don't see her.
On the phone too. Bernice, can you hear me? Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davidge? Mr. Floyd? Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna? Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Okay. We have one resolution this evening. It's case Z 23-360, is it 366?
Yes, 366, yes.
I'm sorry. 89 to 95 Cleveland Lane Block 6.01 lot, 18 in the R1 zone. The resolution is in your packets and if there are any questions, please tell us, and if there are no questions, if someone would like to make a motion.
Don't move.
A second.
Thank you, Claudia.
Ms. Chen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three applications this evening. The first application is 269 South Harrison Street, case Z22-356. And that's, that's on block 11002 Lot 51 in the R 1 zone.
You want some?
So. Karen, are the notices in order?
Yes, the board has jurisdiction.
Okay. All right. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo on this?
Yes, Chairman Cohen, could we, I see Ryan Kennedy's here. And that case needs to be carried, I don't know if we could let him speak for a moment and take jurisdiction of 13 Prospect.
Okay.
Go into the case.
Certainly. You have to unmute, there you go.
Derek, thank you, and much appreciated, Mr. Chair. If, if it's appropriate, I, the, we were informed earlier this week that as, if you experienced, we don't have a full board and because it's a D variance, we're asking that it be carried to the next available meeting, which I believe is September 27th with, with no further notice if the, the board would be considering of that tonight.
Do we have to vote on it, can we just accept that?
Well, the noticing is in order and the board can take jurisdiction of it tonight, so I, I, I would just say maybe all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No one opposed?
And there's an extension of time.
And there is an extension, alrighty, so to, for the benefit of anybody who may be interested or watching at home, this application is being carried to September 27th. It will have its hearing that night and the applicant will not be required to send out any further noticing.
Right.
Many thanks for the consideration.
You're welcome. Okay, our second case is 13 Prospect Avenue, case Z.
No, we've got to get back to 269, Steve.
Yep.
We started out.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, that was, all right, I'm very sorry.
Don't worry.
And Derek, I'll swear you in now, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes ma'am, I do, thank you. Good evening. Molly Powell is the owner applicant of 269 South Harrison. As you'll recall, probably, probably two years ago, the piles were in for a variance for a horseshoe driveway that required stormwater management and they've thought about the design and they've redesigned it to a simpler design, it does not require stormwater management. I'll just go over the application briefly, property's located in the E1 zone, it's 269 South Harrison. That's educational zone, the existing single family is permitted as of right, subject lot is non-compliant with regard to the 21,780 square foot lot area, the existing lots 11,550 square feet. It's also non-required, not complying with the lot width requirement of 100, the existing's 75 feet and the, the house itself is not complying with regard to the right side yard setback, the required is 15, the existing's 9.75. And the side yard parking setback is 15 feet and the existing's 1 foot. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing driveway along the northern property line so that it can accommodate two cars parked side by side and allow for greater mobility when entering and exiting the property. Following variances are required, a side yard setback requirement for parking proposals, requirements 15. Existing is like one or two feet and they're proposing a three foot setback and the front yard parking setback is 25 feet and they're proposing 19 feet and they've requested consideration both under the C1 and C2, and I, I do note that Harrison Street is a county road, so they will need approval from Mercer County if the project is approved. That's a brief synopsis of the case, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer it.
Board members, any questions? Okay. Let's begin. Who is going to present for the applicant, Mr. Pile?
Well, I'll, I'll present, my name is Thomas Pyle, this is my wife Molly Powell, the owner of the property, we are grateful the opportunity to speak to you.
Before, before you continue, we'll just swear you and your wife in.
Yes.
You swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Indeed, yes.
Thank you.
So as Mr. Bridger pointed out, yes indeed, we were in two years ago, that was when our son was still alive and we were contemplating the property with him living in it and later for us to downsize into it. And thus, we were very interested in access for service vehicles to services disability. Sadly, he is no longer with us and so we hold the property and what we are proposing now is simply a much scaled back project to merely expand the driveway from 11 feet wide to about 18 feet wide to accommodate the two vehicles side by side. We propose this for reasons of safety, it's a busy street and getting in and out of a single lane driveway on busy Harrison Street, particularly in December and winter time is problematic. Also to allow the two cars to park next to each other so that indeed service vehicles can get in behind those two cars, get out of the property and not be parking illegally in front of the house on the street. And maneuverability is our third reason, so rather much more simple and scaled back and modest and we are grateful for the board's consideration, especially for the help of the team on the staff to help us get this application together.
Thank you. We have a site plan on this, Derek? Excuse me, you're muted there. Derek, do we have a site plan?
There is, I don't know if you could pull it up, Mr. Pile?
I have a picture of it, let me try to do that. Can I take? Can I guess, I'll take the screenshot on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, you can share your screen.
Okay, okay. Let's see if I, let's see if this does the trick. This, the site plan? Okay, this is, whoops, it's upside down, hold on. Please hold. Okay, I'll try it again, trying it again. Let's see, I'll go this time to Word, I gotta bring up the word first. Word. It worked. Okay. That up, okay, and now we'll go back to the Zoom meeting. And we'll share the screen. Where is the document? Here we go. Share. Okay, expand, okay, this is the site plan. Are you able to see the site plan?
Think you have to, yeah, you have to raise it up on the screen a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Scroll down.
Yeah, I'll scroll down, I, whoops, sorry. Please hold. How do I scroll this, please?
The right side?
Our right side.
Sorry, I said, the gallery is getting in the way, okay, so here we are, like this, right?
There you go.
So this is the site plan prepared by Douglas Pelican, our engineer. Sorry, that's a bit faint. You can see Harrison Street along the top and the house is situated here in the middle. I'll try to expand it now so that you get a better look at it. This is help? Okay, so this, there's the house down below with the walk in front and the driveway is in the left corner here, the upper left corner, can you see that well now?
Yes.
Okay, is that, should I make it bigger or is that good?
That's good.
For, okay, so the driveway is exists now as in basically the white blockhead area. It begins as a single lane driveway and then angles all the way up to here, even into this black triangle to one foot from the property line. We wish to rationalize this driveway by straightening this out so that we can have the driveway expand from 11 feet to 18 feet but take note also to reduce the driveway up here by a very small amount, but nevertheless to keep this whole property line at three feet from, sorry, the property, the driveway boundary at three feet from the property lot. This will enable two cars to park side by side and also whenever one needs to get out, can do so without hindering the other cars' access or requiring that other parked car to be moved. And if the two cars are parked side by side, then this channel leading to the apron then becomes the possible area where a service vehicle can also pull in and get off the street. That's the plan.
See, so you'll turn around in this 18 foot width?
No, we won't be able to do that. No turning around possible, it's really gonna be slotting it in. Will be driving in presumably headfirst or being able more easily to back in and then park the car so that they could be facing the direction of the street for better access to the street. My personal main concern is for the safety of getting into the street, particularly on a dark and busy or snowy or stormy night when the visibility is not good, especially now since the Washington Street Bridge is closed and so traffic along this, this route is, has increased even more than it's already a very high level.
Close the traffic light.
And we're also close to the heart, hardly avenue traffic line.
In the new section of the driveway that you're proposing that on the left-hand side here, will that pavement go all the way out to the right-of-way line?
No. We have it angled here, looks like about a 30-degree angle off the horizontal of the property line. Oh, sorry, well, to that extent, yes, that very corner touches the property line, but that's from where we begin to draw the angle downward and to the left to meet the
I see, it's just right at the intersection of the existing drive and the right-of-way, that short, that will be the paving angle there.
Yes.
Okay.
You, take note also, the, the property line is recessed about a foot off the sidewalk, what you're seeing there, the horizontal lane, S22 dot whatever, that's the sidewalk. And everything north, everything above that constitutes the right-of-way to the street.
And you're, you're increasing the side yard setback there from two feet to three feet?
We're actually reducing it, the side yard setback at the moment, at its most maximum expansion is one foot and that you can see in the blackened triangle at the lower left of this image. We're gonna reclaim that lower left black triangle from pavement back to grass. I mean, it's a very small amount of square footage, I think it's about six square feet, but nevertheless, we want to rationalize it and every square foot counts as we try to measure and preserve for stormwater management.
Okay.
Mr. Pile, could you just advise again who prepared this?
The engineer who prepared this is Mr. Douglas Pelican and his details.
All right. And if we will just call this Exhibit A then, if that's acceptable to you.
That's fine.
Okay.
This is Douglas Pelican's signature.
Got it. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
I go by and looked at the property. That's a pretty steep hill, are you concerned about that at all?
The driveway incline is not so steep, are you talking about the side of the perimeter?
No, the driveway incline.
The driveway?
No.
Uh, no, I'm not, not.
Maybe I looked at the wrong house.
There is an incline, I think it's probably I haven't, I haven't considered that issue, I'm rather more concerned about the visibility to the street, getting in and out of the, getting off the apron into the street in busy traffic.
I know, I just, it just looked like an incline, I
Yeah.
It looks like about two feet based on the, on the
The top of, never mind then. Go the incline. Yeah.
Derek, with that kind of configuration going into the street, will I still have to talk to town, the county?
I don't think so, I'll have to check with engineering, but there's no new curb opening, before they were actually
Yeah.
having a U-shaped where she drive and they had an additional driveway opening, so I, I don't think they do if they're not touching that property in the, in the county right of way, so.
Thank you for raising that, that's our understanding, talking to our engineer, indeed, this is why we are doing the driveway expansion from the property line, we're not interfering with the apron or the right-of-way.
I have a question about, it's really aesthetics, I see on the the diagram that there's shrubbery in front of the house, is there anything along the border or at the front with a little sort of corner?
There is not, the median between the sidewalk and the street is grass and the portion of the the very thin strip that exists between the sidewalk and the property line is also grass.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? Yeah, Mr. Pile, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so, but only my appreciation to the staff for helping us get through it. I do apologize to the board, I had expected to do this back in April, but I got cross eyes on my paperwork and when they led to know that, we had to delay, so I appreciate the board's patience.
No problem. All right.
Mr. Powell, could I ask? Mr. Chair, could I ask one question?
Oh, sure.
Um, I, I really understand your concern about trying to be able to enter and exit safely. I, I, I just don't know the geometry well enough to know if there's only one of, one car, if there's no car in the driveway, is it possible for the other one to come in headfirst and then kind of angle around and, and orient themselves pointing?
Talking about, I think you're just, you're asking about whether we could do a K-turn inside the driveway. That we cannot do, that would require a pad that would extend into the front lawn and that pushes the boundaries of our permissible impervious cover, so we did consider that, we drew plans for that, but we decided against that. I, I would have preferred to be able to maneuver on the property, but it's very tight in that little corner. So as it is, we've settled on this plan so that as we either come in headfirst or we back in, either way, we have enough maneuverability to line up the cars so that they can then go straight back into the street. I'm getting a much better appreciation of what the air traffic controllers in Newark have to do.
You was that? Answer your question?
Well, I, I, it sounds like you can do what I was trying to say, I wasn't really describing a K-turn, but it sounds like you can finagle it, to use my technical terminology and be able to be pointed outwards, or will there be times when you just wouldn't be able to? You always need to, this, this is my question, do you always need to back into it to be able to leave headfirst? Or can you?
I'm assuming so. Two cars parked next to each other, your, your point would be can one move up in front of the other and then somehow work it around?
Or if you were the only car there, could you?
If the only car, well, that would take maybe two or three efforts. I'm thinking about this not only for now, but in five years' time, I'm 71 and, you know, instead when I'm 76 and we have snow on the ground and it's dark, is that the maneuver I want to be doing at that age, trying to get into Harrison Street at 4 o'clock in December? So I'm myself, my ideal would have been to have maneuverability on the property, that's why we proposed the rather extravagant previous plan of a U-shaped driveway. But we backed off that idea and we've had to make a compromise here. Maybe that's all I can suggest, it's a compromise to the extent that we can't, we're not expecting now to be able to get all the safety value that we wish, but this is what we are, so you can see right there, that's
Claudia, these are photos that Mr. Pile had provided previously, correct?
Yes.
Alrighty, well, why don't we call those Exhibit B for you and these are, we'll just call them various photos of property.
Yeah, these are part of
Harrison Street.
That's Harrison Street there, correct. There's the property now, yeah. We're very pleased to have found this property, it's a very nice home, but I do remember way back really on, Mr. Bridger did advise, you got a difficult problem here. And so I've learned.
Well, that does answer my question, I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, board members? Okay, Mr. Pile, we're, we're going to open this up to the public, do you want to say anything before we do that?
No, but I'm obviously happy to answer any questions if the public have any that I haven't addressed so far.
Okay. All right, we're gonna open up the public portion of the hearing. All right, we're going to open up the public portion of the hearing. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
I see no hands. If you want to announce that they have to raise their hand.
If you are in the audience and would like to speak on behalf of two sixty-nine South Harrison, please raise your hand, uh, on the bottom of the screen. There's an area to click. Claudia.
There are no hands.
Okay. All right. We'll close the public portion of the hearing. Uh, once again, Mr. Pile, the next step for us is to go into executive session, but you have the opportunity to speak again before we do that. So do you have anything to add or?
Do you vote for the, do you conduct your vote in an executive session? Is that what I'm understanding?
Say it again, please.
Do you conduct the vote in executive session?
No, no, we just talk amongst ourselves in executive session. And then we vote in public.
Okay, very well, of course. Shall I just stand by or do you want me to like, uh?
Oh, no, you can stay. Just stay exactly there. Right.
All right.
Okay. Well, let's go into executive session. Board members, any questions for the applicant? Any discussion on this or if none, if someone would like to make a motion? Well, let me, let me begin then. I think this is a, a good application. I would be happier, quite frankly, if there was a little extra space to allow a turnaround, but I understand that would require variance or impervious coverage. So that's truly up to the applicant. But I really think this is an improvement over what currently exists out there. And, uh, I am, uh, comfortable with this application and would vote for it.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree as well. I, I think it's actually better than the previous, uh, proposal, which had the, the, um, the U-shape and the second, uh, curb cut, which was close to the corner.
All right. Well, if someone, um, would like to make a motion, then we can move forward with this.
Um, Chairman Cohen, during the last application, which was about two years ago, the board approved that configuration as a C-two variance, finding that it would enable improved safe ingress and egress. So whoever decides to make the motion, if you can indicate whether you think it's a C-one or C-two.
Okay, someone, board member, someone like to be a star?
I just want to point out just for full disclosure, he, the driveway adds a hundred and sixty-four square feet of impervious and he has a walkway leading to the driveway that adds a hundred and two, twenty-two. So that's basically, uh, I was thinking if there might be enough to put a little, uh, that's two hundred and eighty-six square feet. So there could be a little wing off of the driveway if you wanted to consider it. It doesn't require variance. If you went towards the interior of the lot to provide maybe a three or four-foot section, so that a car could turn around, but that's up that. You wouldn't need a variance to do that. Um, I just mentioned it for, you know, your future consideration. So.
Mr. Pile, would you like to do that?
Um, I'm not sure we would at this point. Um, I think we've discovered in this process that there's another walkway along the side of the house that is now added to our impervious cover. So I'd have to do a very careful calculation. Uh, I think we can reserve on that, uh, in these tight spaces and with the regulations we have to work with, we want to, uh, obviously abide by all, uh, stormwater requirements and yet also reserve for anything in the future. If we wish to expand a deck on the back of the house, for instance, that will also impose on the impervious cover. So we're a little bit, uh, tightly jammed here with this property, unfortunately.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that was brought up because, um, um, anyone here who knows me knows that I'm always worried about impervious coverage, but in this case, I'm also concerned about you having as safe a situation as possible.
I really appreciate that. I think, um, it's, uh, for more general consideration for all of us here in town to think through the, uh, the contending issues that we have in some of our regulations. Here we have the environmental regulation against our safety regulation and also our traffic consideration. They're all coming together here on this tiny property, but, uh, we're all working together, obviously, to make it work.
Well, some good news, the bridge is supposed to be done in October, the Washington Bridge. So that should help you a little.
It will help us a little. Uh, we appreciate, however, the university's new parking garage, which is about, you know, two hundred feet behind us, and that will increase traffic coming off of Route One onto Harrison. So, uh, I think it was like Linda Johnson once said about Texas hailstorm. You can't run, you can't hide, you can't make it stop.
I move we approve this as a C-one.
C.
Fine.
Okay. It's, uh, George, you seconded that?
Yes, yes, I seconded it.
Okay, Claudia, can you, any discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for coming before us again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your kind help and insights. We appreciate it. I'll just log off now. Is that all right?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Good evening. Okay. Our next hearing is, uh, it's dark in here. Um, three thirty-six Rosedale Road, uh, case Z twenty-three dash gosh, three, is that three eighty-nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's, uh, block fifty-three oh one, lot four in the R-one zone. Is that, no, it's gosh. Yeah, that's right. I have to prove my lighting situation here. Okay, um, Karen, is everything in order with this?
Yes, yes. The noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, so who will be presenting this for the applicant?
I guess.
I'm Tom Wright, the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Wright, are you going to present the application tonight?
Uh, yes, my architect, Louisa Clayton, is also on to ask if there are more technical questions, but I'm happy to, to present.
All right. Uh, Steve, do you want to hear from Derek first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Cameron Manning and Thomas Ryder are the owners of three thirty-six Rosedale Road. They are seeking, um, C-one and C-two variances, uh, to request the, uh, permission to construct in addition and exception to the required front yard setback properties in the R-one zone in the former Princeton township. The subject lot is not complying with regard to the eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two square foot lot area. The existing lot is seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet. It's also not compliant with the required to the required front yard setback, which in this case is prevailing front yard setback, which is a hundred and three feet. The existing front yard setback is sixty. They would like to add a five hundred and fifteen square foot, one-story addition to the western facade of their home. Uh, the addition would consist of a family room and a powder room. Um, it does not comply with the hundred and three foot prevailing front yard setback. The proposed setback would be seventy feet. And that's a quick synopsis. As I mentioned, they've requested consideration under both the C-one and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger?
Thank you.
Okay, now you can begin.
Okay, Mr. Wright, we just have to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, and I'll do a screen share if that's okay. And I'm going to see if I can, uh, whoops, it's too, there we go. Are you now seeing my screen?
Yes.
We are.
Okay, great. And let me just.
Mr. Um, Wright, we'll mark this as an exhibit for you tonight. Can you describe what it is?
Sure. Um, this is this, I have, I have a few images that I'll, I'll, I'll show.
Okay.
First, I guess I'll just say, you know, we've, we've lived in this house for over twenty years. We want to live in it for another twenty years or more, so we'd like to age in place. Um, our, our house currently has only a, a half bath on the ground floor, um, which has been a real impediment to us. My, uh, handicapped mother-in-law like, uh, comes and visits us, uh, usually about twice a year for about a month each time from Florida. Um, we have to set up a bedroom for her in our front foyer so that she can be close to the, the half bathroom. Um, and, uh, and so we'd like to be able to, to kind of turn our current, uh, TV room uh, by adding the bathroom and expanding it, we'll, we'll be turning it into, um, a place that she can stay when she comes to visit and we want to be able to age in place. And so we're doing this design with consideration that this could someday be our downstairs master bedroom, um, so that we would be able to stay in the house, uh, for a long time. This first image kind of shows that three, three, six, our property, which is the one in green, is a very different property from the others on our block. Um, our property is set into Rosedale Road, um, as opposed to the others where the, where the property line is, is back from the road. Uh, the house is set closer to the street than any of the other houses on the road. Also, our house faces in a different direction. You can't quite tell from this image, but we're at ninety degrees. We face, um, Stony Brook to the east rather than Rosedale Road to the north. So we're at kind of turned ninety degrees. So, so the western edge where we're, we're proposing to do this work is actually the rear of the house. Um, and finally, it's my understanding that if you were to be calculating for any of the other houses on the block and you were going to be, um, calculating the mean prevailing front yard setback, our house would be considered an outlier, um, for the calculation, which just I think gives indication of how, of, of how different our situation is. Um, this is the site plan, um, just to kind of show what, what the property looks like and, and where the addition would be on the west side. I, I hope you can see my, my cursor here that I'm moving. Um, one of the things to kind of keep in mind is that this house is on a, quite a slope. Um, it slopes, the property slopes down to Stony Brook and then to the west, um, where our neighbors are, it's, um, it's quite a significant, um, slope upwards. In fact, kind of, this is looking, um, towards our house from three sixty, our, our adjacent neighbor's property, which has an elevation, uh, about six feet higher, um, than our house, just to give you a sense of, of, of kind of the difference there. Um, the house at three sixty is also like, um, uh, is, is kind of higher behind a, a fence and, and a heavily wooded backyard. So it'd be very difficult to see the one-story addition that we're talking about putting um, on this side. Just to kind of give you a sense of what the, the image from the road is, you can see this is looking in front of our driveway, um, uh, uphill towards Fairway Drive and downhill. Um, really, uh, all of the other houses on this stretch of the road are set back between seventy and a hundred feet. They are all screened by fences and natural vegetation as ours is. Cars drive quite fast on this road and pedestrians and bikers travel on the opposite side of the road where the, um, uh, where the sidewalk is. So really, um, our house is barely visible from the road. Um, and I think this one-story addition that we're, that we're contemplating would be, would be, you know, virtually impossible to see from the road. Um, I'm just adding here, I'm going to extend it so I can see all these on mine. But this is just to, to give you, um, a view of, of kind of looking into our driveway, looking at the house from the opposite side of the road, um, and then seeing what our neighbor's property looks like just, uh, just to the west. Um, these are what the other neighboring properties look like from the road if you travel in that direction. I'll stop the share unless anyone has a question about any of the images I've showed.
Board members, any questions? Nope, that's fine.
Okay, so I'll turn, turn that off just so we can, we can see each other. So again, what we're, what we're kind of asking for consideration of is, is the opportunity to add, uh, to expand the TV room, to add, um, a full, you know, a bathroom to it so that we will have this, this is a downstairs, um, room for my mother-in-law to visit and for us potentially, you know, as we stay and as we age in place in this house, um, have the potential, if we have trouble with stairs, to be able to stay there for a longer time. And I don't know, Louisa, if there's anything I've, I've forgotten that I should have added?
Um, yeah, I think that, that really covers it. I think, uh, that.
Excuse me one second, Louisa. Uh, Karen, do we have to swear?
Yeah, if you're going to make any comments, Louisa, let me just see if I can see you. Don't see you, but that's, okay, there you are. Um, Louisa, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
All righty, and for the record, you're the, um, architect of records and you are licensed in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you.
We'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, I think, I think that this is, is such a unique property and, uh, the main prevailing front yard setback is, is the only um, risk, is the only required zoning requirement that we are not needing here. Um, except that it's an undersized lot, but, um, but we're not doing anything brand new here, so that shouldn't be an issue for just an addition, I don't think. But uh, everything else we're meeting, we're meeting the height to setback ratios, as you've seen in the drawings, we're meeting FAR comfortably, we're meeting impervious coverage comfortably. And, uh, this is just the best location for that. We did look at putting something on the rear, I mean, like, which is the side of this house, which is off the living room, but that just doesn't make sense for what this room is going to be used for. And so the, the most appropriate practical location for this is right off of the kitchen and, um, and pushing into what is for the, this property, the backyard, and it turns out to be the side yard. But we're not violating the side yard setback, nothing else. Um, and, um, so I'd be happy to ha- answer any other questions you have about the design, but we really worked hard to, to keep everything, um, you know, within the, within the zoning, within the impervious, so that we could really, you know, do a responsible addition that was very useful for this family going forward and um, in keeping with the style of the house and really the neighborhood. Um, but we just ran into this main prevailing front yard setback issue, so.
One, one thing I think I forgot to add is that the addition will be, um, further setback than the existing attached garage. So it's not actually going closer. It's, it's ten feet back from, from the existing.
Yeah.
Right, we're not, we're not, we're not, um, creating a new, a new non-conformity. Um, what we're doing is actually less than what's already beyond. So.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any?
Is there a site plan?
There is a site plan in the package.
I can, I can share my screen if that would be helpful.
It would, please.
Okay. Sure, let me just do that. Um, maybe if I'm being the right one. Okay. All right, so can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Can you see the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the survey uh, and all the zoning information, but you see like here's the, here's the required height to setback. And we are well within that here, even the houses. Um, all the FAR and everything is, is fine. Here is the site plan that, uh, you were showed a little bit earlier. This may be a little bit clearer. But here's the, here's the property line of, of three sixty. And here's the property line of three thirty-six. I don't know why it's all the way out here, but it is. So that also creates a funny situation, um, for this particular property. Um, this is Stony Brook. So, I mean, the property itself is on a significant slope from the bank of the stream all the way up. And as you well know, like everybody knows about Rosedale, you go from Stony Brook to Stony Brook Bridge and you just drive up, up, up the hill. Um, this is the existing house here hatched in the diagonal. And there's already this bump out to, to the, to the side, to the west. And we're just adding a little bit more space back here, so kind of tucking it into the hillside. But again, even standing at the property line three sixty, uh, we're six feet above the floor level of this house, and then when the, the house itself at three sixty is all the way over here, so it's it, it's, it's not something that would be particularly visible from, from that property. Um, and again, here is, here's the existing attached garage. And it's already sixty feet from back from the property line, and we're looking to just be even ten feet beyond, you know, further back from that. And thi- this is the, this is the mean prevailing front yard setback that jogs through the middle of the property.
Yeah, it's pretty far back.
It's, I mean, half the house already is, is, is violating that, so.
Yeah. Okay, Steve, is that okay? Stephen? You're muted.
Yeah, do you have any, you have any close-ups, elevations?
Maybe you can just blow the elevations up. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Here we go. So, for example, this is the view from the, from when you come up the driveway, so it's actually side view of the house, but it's the front, and what you see is the garage, and this is Rosedale Road over here.
Yeah.
This is uh, this is then the opposite, this, this one is the opposite of that, so the, what's the rear of the house? And so this is the garage and this is Rosedale Road over here. Um, this is um, the south side of the house, so, so Rosedale Road is on the opposite side. And then this is the side up here, the side property line is three sixty. And this is looking at it as if you were looking, it is if you were standing at Rosedale Road looking at the house, and this is, right here is the, the side of the attached garage. This is the existing home here. And then this is what we're talking about bumping out. So you can see it's only about two feet higher than the existing um attached garage is what we're looking at here. You know, we need to fit underneath these this existing window. We don't want to, we don't want to do anything to the existing house, so we're just going a little bit higher than this existing garage. But other than that, um it's, it's.
Yeah, that's fine. I, that's fine. I was on the, I, I missed it, I guess, but I thought in the original presentation that you were just adding a bathroom or a full bath or something, but that's considerably more than just the bathroom.
No, yeah, we're adding um a full bathroom and a family room.
Yeah, okay.
That can eventually could be, could become a primary suite if, you know, they decide they, they can't really go up and down the stairs anymore, but they can live very comfortably here on the first floor.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, like I said, I thought you were just adding a bathroom, I, I didn't see this other addition, so that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Board members, any other questions? Okay. I continue with your presentation. Please.
Um, you know, I think the last, the only other thing I think to say is that because this property is so unique about, you know, where the property lines are and how this house is set compared with the other proper, compared with the other houses on the block. Then I also don't think that this, this, you know, um, would set, would set a precedent for future applications because this is such a unique situation. The way the house faces Stony Brook instead of Rosedale, the way that property is actually laid out even into the street and also um just how much further forward uh this house is from the others on the, on the block.
What is the name of your lady?
Sorry? Oh.
Did somebody have a question?
How long do you expect to run?
Um, I couldn't understand that. Oh. Okay, there uh any other questions from the board? Okay, yeah. If you'd like to continue with your presentation before we go to executive session? Oh, excuse me, before we open it to the public.
I don't, I don't know if there's any more for, for presentation. I just say again, you know, we, we've designed this with the intention that it would allow us to age in place, and so we would have a downstairs um, master bedroom if we needed that at some future date.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, um if there's no, if you have no other items to present, we will open it up to the neighbors, uh the public portion of the hearing. Claudia, have, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
There are no hands.
No, okay. All right, once again, if there's anyone in the public who'd like to speak, you have to indicate it on the bottom of your screen by raising your hand. Still none, Claudia?
No hands.
Okay, so we'll close the uh public portion of the hearing. Before we go into executive session, if you'd like to, as the applicant, if you'd like to say anything else before we move forward.
No, thanks very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll go into executive session. Um, any comments on the board? Questions, things to discuss?
I think what they're proposing to do looks very good for the house, and I don't see that anybody can see it from any other angle, so I, you know, I think it's a terrific possibility.
I agree with you. I think it's, it's gonna have no impact on the surrounding area or the next door neighbor. If someone, if there are any questions or someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve it under a C one.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good seeing you, Louisa.
Hey, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for, thanks for sticking with the board.
No problem. When are they gonna, when are they gonna turn the lights out on the circle?
Please. Don't get us started. For a little vegetation, it wouldn't have killed them.
Somebody should just unplug them. All right, so uh, we're done for the evening. Um.
Wow.
I guess we'll uh see you all next month.
Well-run meetings, Steve, thanks.
I'm sorry, Steve.
I said, well-run meeting, thank you.
That's it. I didn't cancel the, the other application. Okay, thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
Have a good evening and a good Labor Day weekend.
You too.
Thank you.
Yeah, everyone.
Bye.
Bye. Bye-bye.